Good morning, I'd like to, or good afternoon.
Good morning.
Long day.
Long day.
Really?
I'd like to open our special city council meeting workshop. Second item on the agenda is discussion, possible action to amend City of Guthrie Hotel Tax Ordinance Number 3034. Leroy.
We've had at least two workshops on this topic in the past. We've discussed it at some city council meetings. We've had input from various staff members, input from motel owners, individuals involved in sports programs. Hopefully with additional input tonight, we'll be at a decision point to finally make a decision whether we want to pursue increasing the motel tax. Stillwater now calls it a visitor tax, if we will call it a motel tax, because that's more reflective of what it is. What we have proposed from staff is that any increase in the motel tax be earmarked specifically for sports field improvements and maintenance. We used to have the term "major maintenance" in there, but without defining "major," I didn't want two years to now get into...
What's that?
Yeah, what's major, what's not. So we dropped that term. As we discussed before, travel is an integral part of youth sports. Families and friends are willing to make the trip to see their young competitors. Tournacations is a term now. Tournament vacations are a trend. Families make it a vacation. That's how they use their vacation, is to go to these sporting events, a lot of them. Tournaments typically require overnight stays for participants, resulting in local expenditures for motels, restaurants, groceries, parking, gate fees, fuel, shopping, and cultural activities. In one of our workshops, we talked about an economic impact study on a sports complex in Hayes, Kansas, that was done back in 2008 when they built a new $8 million facility with baseball, softball fields, soccer fields, and four football fields. It's a different venue a little bit than ours, but they were projecting to host 38 tournaments a year, seven for softball, youth softball, 16 for adult softball, 12 for youth baseball, two for soccer, and one for football. They projected 25,000 visits from tournament players and their guests each year, with each spending an average of $92.81. That was an annual impact projected of just around $2.4 million. The tournaments they projected to bring in the most revenue was soccer, youth softball, and youth baseball. In a survey they did, 81% of the survey respondents said a nice new sports facility would increase their likelihood of attending a scheduled tournament in that community. Stillwater, February 8th, is voting to go from 4% to 7%. Their convention visitor bureau director believes the City of Cushing will follow suit and do whatever Stillwater does after that election. So they perceive in their discussions, Cushing will be going to 7% in their future. Edmund is also considering putting it to a vote to increase their visitor tax or motel tax. They did recently a bond proposal in October where they passed a sales tax for one year for hay for pork. They didn't want to do both of those together, so they have moved back the increase in motel tax for at least 12 months until that one year sales tax goes off. And as we've heard from some people, the Edmund director believes their council might not want to outpace Oklahoma City's rate, which is currently 5.5, and that's one of the things they will be taking into consideration. But she's also heard that OKC is looking at bumping up their motel tax rate in the future. I put in your packet a flyer from Stillwater, a promotional piece they did on increasing their visitor tax from 4 to 7.
Where is this?
Should be, it's not in there, it was in your agenda packet.
It's on page 16.
And, "Do I, as a citizen of Stillwater, have to pay this tax?" And his response is, "The tax is only paid by a person staying in a hotel, bed, and breakfast, or short-term rental within Stillwater. How does it impact me as a resident? The additional 3% visitor lodging tax revenue will provide for further visitor development efforts." And they point out if the additional 3% increase would increase the rate for a $100 motel room by $3, and on a $150 room rate, it would increase the cost by $4.50. So if you go through their educational pamphlet they did, I think it explains quite a bit. In your agenda packet, we put a listing of area communities and what their visitor/hotel tax rates are. As of June 1st of 2021, U-Follow is as high as 9%. There is technically no limit on what rate a city can have on motel tax. Chickshay, Enid, Muskogee, Perry, Ponca City, Waynoka are all at 8%. Ardmore, Lawton, Sand Springs are at 7, Woodward's at 6, Bethany and Suffers at 5.5, Bartlesville, Claremore, Kilk City, Midwest City, Norman, Owasso, Yukon, Etoka, Chandler, Cherokee, Durant, and Grove are currently at 5. Al Reno's at 4.5, and Edmund and Guthrie at 4, and Stillwater's at 4, but taking a vote in February to go to 7. Just explained Edmund will probably look next year at increasing theirs. We don't know what amount they will try to go to. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Oklahoma City's at 5%, 5.5%. I put in your packet that came out the other day, our tax collection history. In 2017, generated just under $202,000. In our FY '18, it was just over $236,000. 2019, it was just under $210,000. Three-year average for those three years is $215,900. In FY '20, of course, with the impact of the pandemic and other things, it dropped from 19 of 209,000 to 171,000 that year. But in FY '21, it bounced back where it went down 18%, it went back up 20%. So the current budget year, or just recently ended budget year FY '21, it was back up to 205,000, so it has rebounded. If we decide to call an election, I put in your agenda packet that was distributed, if we want to have an election on April 5th, with a July 1 effective date, started at the beginning of a quarter, give people time to make changes in their literature and different things, it would start on July 1, which would also coordinate with if we decide to let the Oklahoma Tax Commission collect it. So we would, if we're going to hit April 5th, we would need to adopt the ordinance and resolution either tonight or at our next meeting. We talked about in some of our prior workshops and meetings that the Oklahoma Tax Commission may enter into an agreement with any municipality for the collection of a municipally imposed lodging tax. Currently, in this, Justin wasn't able to be here tonight, but some of the research he had done previously, City of Guthrie currently only collects lodging tax from hotels and participating bed and breakfast, but not Airbnbs. Airbnb corporate will not enter into agreements with small municipalities. In our case, they only deal with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. So we would start receiving visitor tax from those entities if we went with the state The Oklahoma Tax Commission could collect all lodging tax from hotels, B&Bs, Airbnbs within city limits. This is not an either-or option. If we go with the Oklahoma Tax Commission, they collect both hotels and Airbnbs. OTC has an agreement established with Airbnb, and VRBO is, they're working on an agreement with them. They would charge us a 1.5% service fee for that collection. One thing we, OTC, does not recognize is a 30-day stay limit. It doesn't matter how long you're there, you pay the tax if it's collected through the state, and our ordinance would be amended to reflect that. And the OTC would collect the lodging tax and would be responsible to manage any delinquent lodging tax. We wouldn't have to deal with that locally. Cities that are currently, some examples, and I put this in your packet, Durant, Sand Springs, Stillwater currently have the Oklahoma Tax Commission collect their visitor tax or motel tax. And Edmund will start the process in July. They will start collecting their tax for them. With that, the, in the packet I handed out tonight, if we do this, the options we have, of course, is stay at 4. If we go, the other that we considered is do either 5, 6, 7, or 8%. And on the spreadsheet, I've tried to round the percentages for our ordinance sake, but if we, for example, went to 6%, and all of the new revenue goes to sports fields, improvements in maintenance, it would generate an estimated $103,000 annually. And it would still generate the $136,000 for tourism, and the $67,000 roughly for parks, and $13,000 for admin. And we'll use what we have collected as admin to pay for the election. Typically, we don't transfer the admin money out of the hotel tax. If we don't need it, we normally use it to either supplement the tourism effort or the park effort. So typically, we don't use that as admin, but it is there if we need it. If we go to 7%, it would generate $155,000 a year for sports facilities. If you go to 8%, it would be $202,000. Before I get into details of the ordinance and resolutions, I'd be glad to answer questions at this point of my presentation, or if you want to hear input from others.
So, on the collect, what, we went through the collection part at one point where the state comes in and collects. I think mainly that was on the Airbnb side of things that, where we weren't currently collecting.
Yes.
What's your opinion of that? I mean, if we were to, regardless if we increase or what we do, we should probably be letting a third party collect this.
Correct. Staff would recommend that whatever we do, we amend our ordinance to do that.
Because a half percent, whatever it is.
Correct.
So, all right, well, that was my question.
What kind of revenue do we think we're missing by not being able to collect from the Airbnbs at the present time? I know it's a swag, but do you have any idea?
Do not have a estimate of that, but if you do a search, there's a tremendous number of them.
We got a lot. Yeah, there's a lot. But what, do we have any kind of breakdown of where the current revenues are coming from? I understand they're coming from hotel, motel, B&B, bed and breakfast. I get that.
And then we do get a few of the Airbnbs that on their own collected, if I remember correctly.
But do we have a percentage of that money that's coming from the straight hotel motel versus just the B&Bs?
I don't have that. We could look it up, but I don't have it tonight. I don't have it in front of me.
Be interesting to have that.
So, the only way that we can, other than Airbnb is voluntarily doing it, the only way that we can do it is to have a larger organization, the Tax Commission, or a third party collect. The city, they won't recognize the city, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Yeah.
And it also reduces some of our administrative burden as far as collecting the motel tax too, and pursuing those that choose not to redeem their taxes. That would be done by the state, so there would be some benefits there as well as collecting from the Airbnbs.
The reason I was asking about if we had any idea of what the revenue might be, is that we think it's a kind of a trade-off that we're paying the Oklahoma Tax Commission?
Bet it offsets our half percent.
Yeah.
I bet it does.
Probably even more, maybe.
I bet it would.
But at least offset, you think?
Probably. Airbnbs are getting more and more.
I think our additional revenue would by far exceed the one half percent.
The half percent. Okay.
And if need be, we could take that one half percent out of our admin portion.
Yeah, because you wouldn't be doing anything really...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
But would the admin portion really be doing at that point?
There is always things that you have to do. You have to audit everything you do, so there's some. But what we typically do anyway is the 5%. We use very little of it administratively, and we just accumulate it in the fund balance, and then when we need to supplement, say, there's a year that we have a special event that's not been budgeted for under the motel tax portion, or if we need a new mower at the parks, we just supplement it from what we built up in the admin in that fund for things that come up like that.
Yeah, because that definitely more than answers Steve's question, so.
And the, I know we had talked to, when we, in previous meetings, we talked about a sports organization, if you will, that would operate the sporting venues, potentially.
Correct.
Would this money be available to them, or is it only through the city?
Of course, that's a concept in development, so I don't want to set anything in concrete. But the concept is that we would look to try to create one sports authority to be over the sporting venues, and they would collect gate proceeds.
Concession.
Concessions. That would be used to pay for umpires and normal maintenance, mowing, those kind of things. They would have access to this money if we needed improvements, like lighting need to be upgraded, or lighting need to be replaced, or, so it would be, these funds would be more towards the larger ticket items, not to pay somebody to mow the field, not to pay the umpires, those kind of things. That's our concept.
Yep. Good one.
Got anything?
Anything else? No? No? Anybody in the audience?
I'll move out of the way right now.
It is a public meeting, so if there are any comments, yes, sir?
Gary.
You go ahead.
Mr. Good. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gary Good, 323 West Cleveland Avenue. I'm just here to represent the Bed and Breakfast Association and speak on the side of raising taxes. And I just, first of all, as I've said before, I love sports. I've been in sports, played Pee Wee Baseball, wrestling, and all that, and I'm a big fan and proponent of kids having safe places to be and play, and love to have people come to town, so I don't want to rain on that at all. I applaud everybody that's trying to make that happen. I would just caution, raising the tax to the point where we aren't competitive with Edmund. Stillwater, they're close by, but they're not as much competition to us as Edmund is. For instance, at Lazy E, the courtyard Marriott there on Covell is really sucking the business away from Guthrie there. And I'm afraid that if we go up to a point where it really significantly makes the difference in cost, that more hotels will go up in that area and we'll lose even more business. So I just, my main point is to caution not to get to the point where we're not competitive. And the other part of it is, is we've lost three bed and breakfasts, two of the places sold, one, well, I think three of the places sold. We're in the process of hopefully getting two or maybe three more to get our numbers back up where they should be. And that would be having seven or eight bed and breakfasts in town. And it's really important, I think, for Guthrie to have bed and breakfast here. And as I've said in the past, it'd be real easy for all of them to just turn them into apartments and not have bed and breakfast anymore. So that's my two cents. I just, I applaud the idea of the sports complex and certainly understand the need to be competitive financially for the city. I just wanted to represent, I know Patel HC is out of town, he's out of the country right now, so he's not here to discuss the hotels, but I'm sure he would be saying pretty much the same thing, so that's it.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Good? Thank you, Gary. Yes, sir?
Five-minute time limit?
Yeah.
I'll be done way quicker than that. My name is Brian Dow. I live at 4422 Buffalo Hill, Guthrie out. Both my boys, eight and four, go to Charter Oak. We moved our house in 2014, and our original plan was to be there a couple of years. And within the last two or three years, my wife and I have discussed, you know, the way the city is headed and the way the schools, the way the school district is headed. And we're pleased with the job that y'all are doing and the direction the city is moving, and the direction that the school district is moving as well. I will say this, my dad was a coach and educator for 41 years, 39 years in Texas and two years here in Oklahoma. I was a coach for five years here in Oklahoma as well. It's really important to invest in your kids, and I know that y'all know that. And this isn't an attack on y'all, but our sport facilities, you know, as far as the youth sports facilities goes, are, you know, years and years and years, light-years behind some of these other cities. And that's not an attack on y'all, because I understand that we can't go plant money trees and, you know, and money, you know, it's not readily available for our cities and our counties and even our schools, so I know it's a challenge. And if there was other, you know, ways to do this, you know, I would, if I had any other ideas, I would absolutely bring them up to you. But I think it's important to invest in the kids. You know, I think a sports complex would be a really big deal for us here in Guthrie. I don't know if you've been, you know, somebody mentioned Woodward. I don't know if you've been up there, but their sports complex is absolutely unbelievable. It's amazing. And I think that this, you know, would be a great thing for our kids and our community, and I think it would generate lots of revenue, and it would probably also get more kids out on the ball field, you know? The way that, you know, sports has gravitated, there's all these traveling teams, so I feel like city league sports fall behind, right? Well, we don't have any intentions of doing travel ball, basketball, baseball, any of that, because I don't think it's what's best for the kids. And so I would really like to see us upgrade our facilities and have nicer facilities here, not just for my boys, but like I said, it might get other kids softball, baseball off the couch, you know, and want to participate, because some of those kids aren't good enough for travel teams, you know? So I think it would go a long way in rejuvenating kids playing sports in our community.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for those comments. Anybody else in the room?
But I would like to make a comment. After he does, after Chris does.
Mr. Evans.
Chris Evans, 2016 Gloria Place. I just want to thank the council and Leroy as well. We, with the sports complex, I wish we were turning dirt last year, but with a million-dollar grant that we've received, it's still going through the state paperwork and waiting for signatures to release that money to us, and then you guys, the council, allocating a million dollars to the project as well, for two-million-dollar project. As you guys learned in the past, we can use 20, 25 million to build this complex, so we don't have that, and we're taking the correct steps that we can to build up to this process. And so with this visitor tax, it would help us with the complex. Right now, we have some preliminary work, but that right now doesn't come with a full sprinkler system or scoreboards. So this type of funding here could go towards something like that, not chalk, not tractors, or it could fall into tractors, but for the most part, I'm thinking scoreboard, sprinkler system, stuff that would help the complex with that. There were some parents that weren't able to be here, and they sent me an email to read to you guys. I'll do that. It's from Justin Andrea Stevens, Lance Carl Alexander, Chris and Courtney McLemore, and Ry and Christie Cherry, and between them, four, eight, 12, 13 children between them. They say, "Guthrie City Council, though we parents cannot be there to support the new softball fields, we wanted you all to know that you have more support than you think, not only by those with young children currently playing in Guthrie, but those on teams outside of Guthrie. We all call Guthrie home and cannot wait for youth to be able to have a facility that they are proud of. Most tournaments, we will attend, average eight to 10 teams a weekend, with 100-plus youth attending and 200-plus parents attending. This brings in over 300 people in town that need to eat, need to shop, and a place to sleep. Not only will this grow Guthrie youth, but has a tourism effect as well." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
I'd like, I'd pulled up, you know, to Gary Good's, that the bed and breakfast is dwindling. I think maybe the association membership is dwindling, but I said I'll stay in Guthrie any weekend in the month of June, and I have 27 options. So I think that...
There's plenty of options.
There's plenty out there. There's plenty of Airbnb options to stay at, and I think that that's typically how people are looking to travel now. Obviously, people still stay in hotels and motels, but I think renting Airbnbs, for us to be able to capture that money through the Oklahoma Tax Commission, we'll see that be a benefit to the community.
That's a big number. Kelton and Bethra, wanted to make a comment.
Chris commented on most of what I was going to say. It's Brian, right? Yeah, so I was just going to comment on him. That's part of what, you know, the hard call is here, and Gary, it's a very hard call. You know, we have to take little steps to be able to have your kid, not your kids necessarily... necessarily, but maybe your kids' kids, you know, to be able to have what we're talking about here. Uh, and so just like the million dollars that we put out on a million dollar grant match, you know, those are hard calls because, you know, we need a lot of se- we need, we need water lines and we need all this other stuff, but we put out the money, uh, to, to try to get, like Chris said, uh, start turning dirt, uh, so that we can get it, you know, get moving on it. And that's what this is about, it's the hard calls that we have to make, but at the end of the day, it's the voters that are gonna have to do it anyway. Uh, and, you know, the voters need to step up and, uh, you know, jump in on, uh, some funding for this type of project because it's not, the CIP tax money's not gonna ever get it done, it's just not. And so that was my comment. It, it kinda goes on the cusp of Chris and a little deeper that, you know, we gotta make hard calls and do what we gotta do, uh, to make things happen.
I, I wanna say thank you for, for matching the grant. That's a really, really big deal and I know it's a hard call.
Yeah, it's a hard call.
No budgets are tighter than they've ever been.
Yeah.
And I think that's a really big deal that y'all did that and I appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll appreciate that.
Well, and the other point with this whole proposition, we can spend the two million bucks and have everything we want, it's, it's a dream, but if it was the greatest and we spend that money, yet we put no mechanism to keep it funded and to keep it maintained and all of that, we're gonna peak and then it's gonna head right back down. It doesn't make any sense to spend the money and upgrade everything and then not have something in to help with maintaining it and keeping it going and that's the way I look at this. But none of us can sit up here and raise anybody's taxes, we don't have that say-so. Uh, it's up to everybody in the community, but I think it is up to us to give the community the opportunity to say what they want. So that's, you know, we put our money where our mouth is as far as matching the grants and trying to get things rolling, but the rest of it is really up to the ball people and everybody that wants to be involved and I, I think we owe them the right for them to decide. All we can do is make the option, here it is, do you want it or do you not? And let them decide, it's not really on us other than deciding to let them tell us what they want.
Well, and I think when it comes down to even looking for a hotel, I Google hotels near Lazy E Arena, the first one that pops up and on Google search is Holiday Inn Express and Suites in Guthrie, uh, Hampton Inn and Suites in Guthrie. Hilton Garden Inn, Edmund isn't till the third one. So one, our business is spending the marketing dollars to draw the business there, that's their job. And two, are they providing the right experience? Because, well, I mean, when I look for a hotel, I'm gonna look to see, obviously, these are my options and I'm gonna click, look at a few pictures, does the place look nice, updated, does it look like the experience I want?
And breakfast.
I'll book it.
It's a breakfast.
I, I, looking at their taxes situation never crosses my mind.
Right, right. I went, I was telling Leroy, I went through, I usually use an app to book and I went through the places we stayed the past couple of years and some of them didn't, they just said, here's your total bill, but some of them actually broke it down and the smallest was ten and the highest was twenty and that was in Memphis. Most of them were around fifteen percent, give or take, you know, percent either way, so if we do, do nine and then whatever we talk about here, we're not gonna be out of average.
No.
But that's just in the places that I've stayed and it's in the surrounding states or maybe two or three states away, you know, they're not all here, but that's kinda just the cross-section and I mentioned this before when we talked about it, when you're looking through there, like you said, you're looking, is it nice, is it in a slum end of town, is there breakfast? And I don't even see the stupid tax. I, well, like I said, when I went back through a lot of these, there, it doesn't tell you the tax, it just says room tax and all was X dollars, so I don't even know what they are. And it's, it's the same thing when I'm looking for one, I'm looking for, does it have what I want? Do I want that two hundred and twenty-nine dollar a night one or do I want a decent one for a hundred and fifty a night or it's more about that than it is go, well, I can drive thirty more miles and save two bucks. Cause you don't even see that until you buy it and it's over in the end.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's pretty much an invisible tax.
Yes, it is.
To the purchaser.
So what is the to- what is the total on top of, is it nine and, it's not nine and four, right? What is the total?
That's it.
It's nine and four, so it's thirteen.
Right.
That's what we're talking about right now. Okay? And, uh, so, well, now we just looked at this app a little while ago and, and I think the, the average was fifteen or plus, wasn't it?
Yeah. Fifteen, give or take a point either side, but that part's up for the people to say what they want, you know, I, really, it doesn't matter in my opinion, other than...
Can this, something like this go to a vote with a, if it went to a vote, it would have to be with a fixed amount that we determined, right? In other words?
Correct. We have to determine the percentage that we would...
Couldn't be a check here.
No, sir. I'm not aware of a way to do that. Any other questions?
Well, I really appreciate this visitor tax form Stillwater has here because it puts it in plain perspective where a hundred dollar room would increase only by three dollars. If you're gonna stay in a hundred dollar room, you don't have three dollars, maybe you better, you better not stay anywhere. As far as the facilities go, I grew up playing Pee Wee sports and they were on the playground of every school in town. If you had a backstop, you were fortunate, um, or a field with grass on it, so, and now I have four grandchildren and soccer, baseball, football and basketball, so I've come to really respect what you're saying about the draw of the community. It's, it's, and Chris, you're post, you're all over the country with your boys and, yeah, I can see very, uh, a lot of value in, in, in the draw that would bring people and, and just pride of the facilities for us as citizens, so.
I just think the, the individual fee is very, is insignificant to the hotel or motel user, but the overall collection could be very impactful to our community.
Well, and that's, and you're right, and what I, the point I was making was that this is just gonna be a fraction of what we need, of it. There's gonna be a lot of other hard calls that come across this ta- this shoe up here to make any of this happen, so.
Well, and I, and I think something hasn't been talked about, Leroy mentioned it a little bit, but I think that the potential for more people coming to town associated with activities involved with these sports, um, because there are, there are regional sport, sporting events that attract people, uh, and many of them, uh, have to stay in hotels or Airbnbs or, 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 or Bed and Breakfast. Uh, and, uh, so there's some potential that the volume is going to increase, uh, too, to help, uh, I guess from the perspective of Airbnbs and Bed and Breakfast and hotel per- perspective to help offset that, uh, that increase in, in, uh, in tax.
So build it and they will come.
When's the last time the rate was increased?
Hasn't been increased since that ordinance.
Ninety-eight. It's time. Everything else has went up.
Well, and, you know, if, if two dollars, like y'all said, is gonna be a big deal in where you stay, but then you check in and go over buy a, a three dollar bottle of tea or something out of the vending machine, so it's, it's irrelevant, I think.
Yeah, I agree. Now, I think we just need to decide what rate do we think would be the ideal rate for our community.
That's, that's really the next step is decide whether we want to stay at four or go to five, six, seven or eight and then the rest of it will be basically filling in the blanks on the ordinance and the resolution accordingly.
My feelings are I'd love to go to eight, but I think that, um, staying in line with Stillwater and Cushing might be more practical.
Yeah.
Which would be?
Seven.
Seven.
Cause you have, during football season, which just finished, but a lot of people stay in Guthrie and travel on over to Stillwater because they can't find a place over there, so.
So it's seven.
On vacation, we don't ever look, I don't look at tax, I don't care.
On a hundred dollar room, you're talking about three bucks.
Yeah.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Chief?
I'm traveling with two girls playing travel ball and Chris and I had a discussion, Tenny and I've had it, it's his, our, each's problem. I bet we drop a hundred fifty, two hundred bucks every weekend when we go somewhere and sometimes we don't spend the night, but we're, not only is the hotel tax, you're getting revenue there, but you're going and grabbing fast food and we forget something, we go to Walmart, we go to Dollar General, we're buying gas, we're buying snacks, so not only is the hotel tax increase helping, but your overall sales tax collections are coming up because you get that many more people coming to town and they're buying stuff when they come to town and they're operating stuff with them, because a lot of these, uh, ballparks, they won't let you take a cooler in or whatever, so they're running and getting stuff in between games or eating dinner before they hit the road to go back, but they're spending that money while they're here in town. And I can tell you from the parents we're with, they like coming to town as the size of Guthrie versus going somewhere deep into the metro because it's easier getting out of places, the traffic's less hassle, uh, hotel rooms are usually a little bit easier to find, that are cheaper, and they just like the experience more in these mid-sized towns versus the large towns. Like we go to Sand Springs, we go to, uh, Wausau, some of these outskirts towns, Choptaw, here, over there, all the time versus somewhere in the middle of the metro areas, so we're perfectly positioned, I think, to have a great tournament venue here.
Yeah. Well, I personally agree with James, I, I would, I would gravitate towards that seven, seven percent.
Here's another issue you have.
Three percent increase.
Anytime you put something to vote unless you're gonna get out there and educate, uh, it's gonna die. Okay?
Well, a lot of that's cool.
The buy-in has to come from everybody, it has to come from not just us, cause I've got buy-in on it, but it has to come...
Here's where the chamber comes into play, the chamber needs to rally behind us.
The chamber needs to rally behind it, but also, and I know you don't want to, Gary, but you, the B and B organizations, everybody else has to rally behind it because this, and people need to realize, we're not talking about building a ballpark with this, this isn't even a fraction of what we need, okay? We've already started that with a million dollars and the million dollar grant and we'll keep going that direction. This is just a, a puny little maintenance portion of it, okay, that needs to increase drastically. And so buy-in needs to happen, uh, by the whole public and everybody that watches, the people that don't watch, that's the problem I see, is that there's a lot of people that don't know what goes on up here.
Well, that's, uh, for a lot of the people that, once it gets out there, the, the sports people, the parents that say, I wish, I wish.
They are gonna have to get on it.
They're gonna have to, yeah.
That's the point I'm trying to make, because if they don't, this is all for not.
Well, we owe them that opportunity.
Exactly.
What they do with it is up to them.
Yep.
Well, we need to put together some of the facts, uh, like Stillwater, that, that really put it in bold and white.
That's a good sheet, that's a good deal.
And here is, here is what, here's what the real impact is and here, here it is in writing, here it is right in front of you, uh, it's not, it's not just hearsay.
But if we, forgetting just this little portion of it that assists in building this ballpark, but once we have this ballpark done and everything else, wouldn't you think that the Airbnbs and the BnBs would be full? Because I do, honestly, uh, you know, you got, you got right now, just like with people in RVs, they don't even have a place to park, they're looking for places to park their RVs even, they don't have it, okay, when, when the Lazy E gets packed and full. So, I mean, the whole thing, that's why we need buy-in from everybody, because the more people we bring in, the, the more business that you're gonna get, it's just simple as that, cause like he said, a bottle of tea isn't gonna keep anybody from getting a room, it's just not. My opinion.
Hey, doctor, I'm good.
Come on up.
Come on up and, uh, introduce yourself, name and address.
The address is a little tricky, I'm in between. Amelia McCormick, I'm currently out by the Lazy E in the process of moving. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of softball and all those names that Chris read off are all of my extremely close friends. Um, I have a daughter that plays travel softball, she also plays junior high for Guthrie softball, so I see advantages to this, both from the travel aspect and being able to, um, entertain tournaments and bringing all those people into, um, to the city, to the hotels, to the Airbnbs. From experience, between May and the end of twenty twenty-one, I traveled from Tennessee to California with my daughter, travel. I've stayed in Airbnbs, I've stayed in hotels, um, to the point, it's usually the proximity to the park is where I wanna stay, because if I've got a seven, if I've got an eight AM game, I have to be there at seven, I don't wanna have to drive thirty minutes to get there, I need to be there quick. So I do think proximity to the, the place where you're having the tournament is important, to the point that this gentleman made as well about just the youth sports and increasing that and having nice facilities. I think the more we can get youth in, involved early, I think it also helps the school sports. Um, hopefully, everybody's aware of how well the, the, the high school softball team did this year, the junior high is extremely talented and moving up, so there's a lot coming, the more girls and boys that we can get involved in youth sports, having local complexes to also provide for league, not just the tournaments and the travel, but just local leagues that maybe they can't afford to do travel ball, but wanna participate, to have local leagues and have the facilities to do that and not have to go to Edmund or to more Edmund, I don't even know what the status of their league is right now, but not to have to go. A- again, i- it's also going to better your school programs by having these facilities a better, in addition to bringing in the money from the revenue, so.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
I agree with you said about buy-in, I mean, it's gonna be big.
Well, she's bought in, that's the kinda buy-in I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah. And I like what you said about maybe helping your, the Airbnb or the, the Bed and Breakfast and the hotels.
It will.
And, and, you know, the grant is a huge deal, what y'all did is a huge deal, but a- as you said, it's gonna take, it's gonna be a community effort and I think that, you know, even fundraising would come into play if you wanted to have something as nice as what we're talking about, you know? So I think getting the community involved and getting them to understand, you know, some of us in this room, it would be up to us to help do that, along with other parents and, and, you know, it would just, it'd take a, it's a community effort.
The chair of the baseball association will help with the fundraising. Chris?
There we go.
You're passing the buck.
Little League baseball's here too.
Got someone right in the room. Leroy.
Well, I, I guess it's time for y'all to make a decision.
James, was you making a motion at seven?
No, we're not making a motion.
Oh, you're not making a motion?
That happens next meeting.
But I, I do think that seven percent would be...
I think the seven percent is a good one.
Where are you getting the seven percent, out of curiosity?
Just saying, not, not going above where Stillwater's going, Cushing's going, it's probably gonna put us above Edmund for right now, but I dead, I bet it doesn't put us above Edmund for long, cause if Oklahoma City's a five, they'll go up too, everything is just going up. I mean, we're, I just, I would anticipate that if Oklahoma City's gonna go up, Edmund will go up and all the other surrounding areas will follow.
Well, one thing that, a point was made that she just made a minute ago was that, and I would feel the same, is that I, I don't wanna have to drive thirty miles if I was taking my kids somewhere.
You're exactly right.
I mean, I think that's the, I think that's a...
I'm not gonna drive thirty miles to save three dollars.
No, I'm not gonna drive thirty miles to save ten dollars.
No.
I see some heads nod, nodding.
Well, there's nothing to be done in this meeting.
No, I know, but we need to have an idea...
The action items are on this agenda.
Oh, are they?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, then we're looking for a motion.
Do we need a motion?
So, ordinance, correct, ordinance number three-three-six-six, uh, there's two options and the one that we're proposing is the option for the Oklahoma Tax Mission to collect and so, uh, if you pass that with seven percent is the amount that you increase the motel tax to, then five percent will go to administration, eighteen percent of it will go to parks, thirty-six percent to tourism and forty-one percent to sports fields for, uh, improvements in maintenance. And so that's how we would fill those blanks in on the first page of the one that says the OTC collect. Um, I would point out, uh, I, uh, that, um, the election would be on April fifth, uh, and the ordinance would become effective on July one, which is the beginning of a quarter, which would also coincide with the tax commission collecting it. Um, I did, um...
Could you do me one favor, could you run by those persons again if we increased it to seven percent, how much of it goes to administrative costs?
It's, it's on that first page.
It's right here. It's the same... It's the same percentage. It's just a dollar amount. For the most part.
I did add, uh, that's not in your packet, uh, under use of funds, uh, the tax revenue collected may also be pledged and used for public capital improvements related to the purpose of the hotel tax and to pay the debt service and cost of issuance on any notes, bonds, obligations, and, or evidence of indebtedness issued by the Guthrie Municipal Authority to finance such public capital improvements. And the reason I did that is, uh, a year from now, if we get a chance to apply for another land and water conservation fund and we can use five hundred thousand of this and get a million dollars from them, we may not have enough collected. At that point, we may have to, uh, borrow against the future revenue to get the match. Uh, so I just wanna have that opportunity in there. Uh, so with that, I would recommend that you adopt, uh, the seven percent amount that's been proposed, ordinance number three-three-six-six, uh, in the format for the Oklahoma Tax Commission to collect. And I would add the caveat, subject to minor, uh, edits by city staff tomorrow as we review the ordinance with the holidays and everything. This was put together fairly quickly and there may be some minor, uh, edits we need to make when we review it tomorrow.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
And that's option one in the packet that you gave.
It's actually option, should be option two.
Two?
Of the OTC. They got it as twenty.
It's the one that, I, it says one, but it's actually option two.
Well, there's two motions here. There's a motion for the tax collection of it and a motion for the percentage for go to, go to.
Correct. If you adopt this, it's seven percent. And the distribution, I said, is what we would use to fill that in. And the ordinance that you're adopting is a version for the tax commission to do the collection.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve going through the Oklahoma Tax Commission with seven percent.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, questions?
Who, who is the second?
Uh, Ron. Any other questions? Lauren, submit your votes. Vote.
All votes, right?
See the votes. Unanimous approval for all those present to approve, uh, the option two of the ordinance, change in the ordinance three-three-six-six, subject to minor edits by staff to ensure that it's all, uh, legal.
And then resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash oh-three is the second step it needs and that's actually creating the ballot question. And we will insert the same percentages, uh, that we did in the ordinance, uh, in the same time period of when it would go into effect, uh, and when the election is. And again, uh, just in case, I would, uh, recommend we adopt it with, uh, minor, uh, edits by city staff.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion in there? Submit your votes.
All votes, right?
See the votes. Unanimous approval then on resolution twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-two dash zero-three, uh, with, again, the opportunity for minor edits, uh, by staff upon review. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our business for our workshop. And so we conclude and we'll be back.